All right, are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
6:30.
We're here.
Order.
Here.
Steve Ollins.
Here.
Sherry Baran.
Here.
Mark Clark.
Here.
Laura Ransum.
Here.
Lucy Squidward.
Here.
Here.
And other than Lake Camp, anyone recording the meeting?
All right, will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public wishes stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Happy New Year. Anyone here for public participation? The first item, well, item number four is acceptance of minutes from December 4. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great. Item five, we're going to have our presentations from our student reps.
All right. So Upon Aquas' annual game night hosted by Student Council was an excellent hit. More than 170 students and faculty attended the night. Congratulations to the Grand New Bedford Prevention Coalition Contest winners. In third place, winning $25 was Madison Fisher from the junior class. In second place was $50 gift card to Kelsey Cudo of the sophomore class. And the first place and also winning $100 gift card and a new logo was Emma Albertini of the junior class. Congratulations to Aiden Wilson, currently ranked number one in the class of 2020. He won the Francis W. Galishaw Memorial Scholarship for $1,000, receiving a certificate and a speech in his honor at the luncheon.
Nice!
I don't usually interrupt, but at least you didn't make him read. Nice job.
Excuse me?
You being the first person or the third person?
We are pleased to announce that 52 members of the class of 2020 received John Abigail Adams scholarships at an achievement awards session. The students winning their scholarships were acknowledged for their terrific performance at the ELA Math and Biology MCAS. Thank you to Karina Jacobson, grade 10, who performed as a piano accompanist for Assawamset Elementary School's winter concert. She's a member of the band choir and select choir, as well as a jazz ensemble at the high school. Forensic scientist supervisor Sherry Menendez and FLRSD parent from the Mass State Police Crime Lab spoke with SRO Bartholomew's law enforcement interns about her journey into forensics. She offered great advice to the interns who may have an interest in the field of forensics as well as an inside look into her field.
35 class of 2020 members attended a BCC information session at AHS. Mr. Pearson, an admissions counselor, reviewed BCC's academic, social, and civic programming, as well as their financial assistance and application processes. And students will have a chance to visit the campus and apply to BCC on the spot on Missions Day. A huge thank you to our AHS music boosters for their donation of a Model P45 Yamaha Digital Piano. The AHS Winter Concert has been rescheduled for January 16 at 7:00 p.m. The topic of an up-and-coming AHS and FLMS joint, Caring for Children and Community Members' Night, is vaping dragons, school safety awareness. The employee to join us on Thursday, January 23 at FLMS for this event. And the Upon Aquas School Counseling Department will be hosting our third annual Career Day on Friday, January 31. If you're interested in volunteering as a Career Day presenter, please email msfontaine@msfontaine.com.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions for the student reps? Thank you very much. Okay, you want to start here?
Just simply goes out saying, as we knew all along, a couple of talented young
Definitely.
students right alongside me as well, also present for the scholarship recognition as well, the other 50 students we recognize. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Nice.
You've done some great work.
Thanks, Sean, and great job.
Good luck at DECA.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a lot going on. We have all business, starting with class size transportation staffing updates.
So I have a couple of real quick items unless you have specific questions. And as we've alternated between transportation and class size, you see the January 6 class size updates. No real surprise, not a great fluctuation if you go from October 1, six fewer students within the district. There's really no rhyme or reason to it, quite candidly, right? We actually had a family, though, just move in to the intermediate school just the other day with registering four students.
Okay, so that's going to offset the...
So, yeah, so it kind of, you know, but we'll continue to update that. But you can see, you know, one or two student change from September, October. Nothing really atypical stands out. You know, we started at 2832 for October 1, and we're at 2826. And as I just meant, we saw four students. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, one question here from Mr. Orlin.
Am I looking at this right, that we could potentially going into next year with a plus 50 students, based upon, especially at the high school, based upon the 175 going out and the 260 going up?
No, because take into account the old county students.
But that's 50, right, right there, usually about that number.
It's still high. Eighth grade is a pretty high class.
Yeah, it is a larger class, so, but when you consider Bristol-Aggie, when you consider the applications, and we kind of looked at that through the budget process, we did not, we did not project a large increase in class structure in class, in spite of the large eighth grade group.
Any other questions on this? Okay.
The other, the other piece for, just for the staffing updates, you did, you should have received an email today with two recent resignations. One was a van driver and one was a paraprofessional, so those are not new positions that were posted, but they're filling slots in, in one instance, a personal reason and another professional opportunity for somebody. So they came kind of abruptly. We get them on school spring, and we're confident we can fill both of those positions. We're not even looking at the 21, obviously, until we get to the budget season, so those are current postings right now. Staffing numbers are in place. The only other item that I just would share with you under kind of class size transition students is our dental numbers. So the insurance, the program that you folks supported about coming through and started in Middleborough continues to grow, and we just got the recent numbers, and they continue to show the need within our district at all levels. So I mean, just to give you an example of the type, without going too specific, but I'll just give you the middle school, all the school in this order. So these are the total number of students that access the service, and I won't give you the total breakdown. I'll probably do that with Cherry at the Wellness. Some are broken down into cleaning, and some are looking at tooth decay. I won't break, I'll just give you the general number, though. Sixth grade, 40 students, took advantage of that. Seventh grade, 34 students. Eighth grade, 24 students. At the intermediate school, in fourth grade, 22 students. In fifth grade, 30 students. At Assawamset Elementary School, kindergarten, 26. First grade, 27. Second grade, 20. Third grade, 26. At Free Town Elementary School, pre-K, 13. Kindergarten, 29. 26, 25, 17 was the grade level breakdowns of students who are choosing to participate. It's voluntary. I did speak, and something asked who was present, with the principals questioning the disruptive nature of the activity. They're being pulled out. The principals had absolutely no reservations and no negative feedback from staff in relation to how it's been handled. So it's handled with a school nurse, principals informed, staff are aware. But it does show, and I have information such as individuals who don't have insurance on this and that take advantage of this, and so I have that kind of confidential breakdown, broken by grade. If you're interested to see that, want to share that out to the community per se, but I think it does speak to the demographics and the growing need. And I'm pleased, quite honestly.
Well, and the earlier they get treatment, the earlier the interventions and more successful the outcomes.
So I'd be happy to share. We're going to do this more detailed wellness, but appreciate.
Be curious, if you don't know enough, is, what's the duration of the pullout?
Probably depends on what they're doing. If they're actually doing a cleaning, that's no half hour.
No, I think that's where the concern would come in.
Yeah.
So some are a quick checkup and a referral to a dentist, right? And so it can be...
That's quick.
That's one list, and it's a pretty large list, actually. So it can simply be a referral that you need to see a dentist.
Got it.
So I think it varies. Steve, I'll be happy to ask it through the Wellness Group.
It'll be good to know. How long? Thank you, and thank you. So now we're on FY '20 budget.
In your packet, I provided an updated FY '20 budget. We're on track. Also in there is the assessment sheet. There have been no changes since our last meeting.
I'm sure you don't want to go on and on and on about this.
So far, we've had a couple of snowstorms, but overtime has been limited. We're monitoring that same thing with the oil consumption, but things are on track as of right now. There was an FY '19 supplemental budget that was passed.
Yes.
We have not heard what the strike breaker original transportation amount will be to the district, but once I find out, I'll pass along that information.
And that information should be coming soon, shouldn't it?
They were looking at the rural amount, the aid that's going to be coming out before the other two, but once I know, I'll pass it along.
Good. Questions? Thank you, actually. The school improvement plans? Go ahead.
So Mrs. Fox, they were, they were, there as a placeholder, as this group knows, we haven't yet ultimately determined what the, you know, next steps would be, but I do know, Mrs. Fox, I know she'll speak to it representing the committee, did due diligence as chair and did send out emails, including me in that process, with some detailed questions in relation to each of those plans, and the principals responded back.
Beautifully.
And I'm sure you can probably comment to that in detail, and are certainly open to any and all activities which we will showcase their schools or presentations moving forward.
Yep.
And I assume I...
So thank you for that. Yeah, I did. I had a number of questions, and I'm sure as everyone else went through them, they did too, but I decided to go right to the principals, and I was, it was remarkably swift how quickly the comprehensive responses came, and I sent, I shared them with Steve as well, and then had a subsequent conversation that, you know, I'd really like you to dive into. But basically, every one of the responses was extremely thorough. I had concerns about this huge focus on ELA and reading, and I was like, where's the math? Don't let that go. There were questions about which, how come this district goal is focused on three other smart goals? Also responded to. Excellent, excellent responses by everybody. And then the coordination that's occurring between the intermediate school and the two, between and among the elementary schools, is wonderful. And certainly, I think it was Liz who said she couldn't imagine it being any other way, that that coordination is not just for a school improvement plan, but it is ongoing, it's consistent, and it has to do with everything, not just what we need to be looking at to improve. So it's, you know, I'm happy to share the responses with everybody. I just, because we hadn't deliberated, I did not do that. And certainly, as you go through them, if you have any further questions, clearly, they're more than willing to respond to those. But Steve, you and I chatted a little bit, and I'd like you to go into what your idea was.
The school improvement plan is an opportunity, or there is an opportunity that, and Steve brought this up, is what is going on well at the schools.
Right.
Right? And I know a couple of years ago, so there's two parts that I wanted to bring to the table. A couple of years ago, we used to round robin to the individual schools. I don't know if we bring that back a little bit, where there's a one-time visit, where they can talk about their improvement plan, or what's actually working at the school, what fun things are happening, and what they're doing well, is more of a marketing component. My other question is the timing.
Right.
Right? Is, and this is where I defer to the administrators, is, is there a better time to them to review and present? It just seems like a disconnect where it's before the superintendent's goals, and it's, you know, we're already halfway through the year type thing. Is there a better time that they can put together, present, and it's for the upcoming school year, instead of the disconnect here for that? I don't want to belittle the work that they put into it.
At all.
Just more, in a more efficient way.
So I haven't an opportunity, we just had a leadership team meeting just yesterday, but that wasn't a discussion, but I can't share with you, and I know Will has been a proponent of same type of angle, really, giving the message and talking more beyond just MCAS scores, right?
Right.
So I had a very brief email thread with the chair today, and kind of did look at the presentation format and where our meetings are. And I think it would fit if we wanted to do something like that, starting with the, for example, our next school committee meeting is here, obviously. It's the program studies. The high school principal will be here with athletics. We could kickstart the school improvement plan with the high school principal. We could then look at, and I've actually kind of identified three or four meeting dates that don't interfere with the budget presentation, for example, which you want to have here, where we could then go to each of those schools. I know the principals and the administration would certainly be in favor of showcasing not only an update on their school improvement plan, but give that opportunity to kind of showcase their school, gets us out a little bit, and also, I mean, so I think it's real possible to do. I mean, we can work out the logistics. I looked at, you know, just for example, February 26, Middle School, March 11, Grays, and then elementary schools, two other dates, you know, and just kind of identified the principals, if you'd like to do that, where we would go and have the meeting there, set up something and not have a policy meeting. We might be all wrapped up by that point with the chair, where we could just do a walkthrough, too, for those that are there a few minutes earlier at some point. I can't imagine that the administration and the principals wouldn't welcome an opportunity to showcase some of their student programs and services. Obviously, logistically, it's up to you folks if you want to do that. We could certainly do that all here, right? We could still just use that date.
I don't think, I think that we talked specifically about having, having them in the different schools, where in the past, when we've done that, it may not have been super full, but we had good attendance. And if we, if the word were out that it's not just about MCAS scores, but it's about the good stuff that's happening in the corridors of each building.
Well, I think given enough notice, the principals could work with their PTOs and councils and bring that together. So my recommendation, if that's a direction the committee wants to go to tonight, is potentially pencil in some dates right now with some sites down the line. I kind of tend to always put that...
I just want to make sure others on the committee...
No. I thought that for this year, that, to me, sounds wonderful.
Well, I think it captures some, you know, Will's reference to the past.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about.
It really is, these references.
And we want, we want to let them know, as building leadership, that we do respect that work.
I skipped over one, the budget presentation on February 5. I feel we'll have that here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Keep separate of that from a school presentation, but I think from that point on, we could, we could do that, even if we were having budget discussions some, as long as there's enough notice.
Mrs. Baran.
I think it's important that we go into the schools once in a while. We haven't done that in quite a few years, I don't think.
Several years, yeah.
In a couple of years.
I think the staff appreciates it. I think the custodian staff probably appreciates it, because it's nice for us to go in and see all the good work that they all do.
And we can make an adjustment. I just, I'd like to...
No, no, that's great. I'm glad we had this chat.
We, so if I, I'll read off the dates right now, and then we can make an adjustment if we need to.
Okay.
They're obviously already scheduled, school committee meetings, we're just identifying the site. So the 22nd, High School, right, will remain here. Dr. Starkey is scheduled to be here for the program studies anyways, but I'll make sure that she understands she's kickstarting kind of this process as it relates to school improvement and other activities. February 26, the Middle School. March 11, the Intermediate School. March 25, Free Town Elementary School. April 29, I'm skipping over our public hearing.
Yeah.
AES.
Okay.
So the only, I guess the only item, that only item that I'll bring to your attention, and I'll finalize this for the 22nd, in the event that, because I haven't shared this with leadership team, if some, if there's some requests and I have to make an adjustment, I'll inform you at our next meeting.
Sure. I think it's a good start to just kind of change the dialogue a little bit, and to address Will's concerns, and to, I think, be a little bit more respectful of some of the work that these principals and the staff are doing.
It speaks to the March follow-up. You have school improvement plan updates, right?
Correct.
So this is around that same timeframe, and, you know, to your point, Steve.
And I just, I welcome their opinion on the timing.
Right. We wanted, I think I said that in my email, we want to make sure that this is okay with them. I don't want to just kind of descend on them.
Yeah, no, I see it as, and I'll, and I'll make sure they understand it. It's an opportunity for them to showcase and promote not only their facility, but obviously programs and things beyond. That's usually the frustration, let's be honest, for any administrator, that you only see a sliver of it, and we're talking about assessment, and there's so much more.
There is so much more. The only problem is, and I said this before, that when we had, we went to different venues, I, every time, went to the wrong one. So...
That's logistical item that we need to take care of.
We had that incident a few times. We'll be sending... Yeah, and Renee always saved my life, but I would be parked and go, I should check what she said.
So Mrs. Fox doesn't know this, if I may add, I just want to give you a little background. So if you think that you don't have some significance or some presence as a school committee, I have a pretty talented leadership team and a group of principals, and experienced and very confident in what they do, and should be. But the first email that came forward from the chair, which was also, by the way, thank Jean, CC to me, the principal on camera, so I'm not going to reference the, called me and said, "Please tell me I'm not the only one." And so, as it turns out, at that time, it was the first email.
It was.
So I said, if you saw the individual, as we would say following this, I said, "Listen, please do not worry. We had talked about how we were not going to have you come in front each night." So subsequently, I get the next email, and I have to call the individual back and say, "You're off the hook. There are more coming." I believe the chair is sending them to all of the schools, which she subsequently did.
But there was only one question for the rest of the script.
But this is somebody you all trust and have confidence in, as I do, and it's interesting, like...
I'm so sorry about the angst.
Little, little angst for a minute going, "Wait a minute, what did I do?"
Oh, I feel terrible.
And Jean, to, and just so this committee knows, I don't know, you didn't see this, she did it extremely well. It was, it was, it was, so there, you know, comments in relation to some suggestions and thoughts, but everything started with a real positive, supportive piece, and...
Oh, thank you.
Multiple principals commented on that, that in spite of the angst of getting an email in this process, they felt, they understood completely what was being asked and felt good about that. And I think that, I do believe that they, they will look forward to highlighting some of the student work and staff.
I do, too. I'm glad, and I'm glad that I did, even though I created angst, I'm glad I went down this road, and I'm glad you were able to intervene and tell them, this is not any kind of witch hunt, this is all about, we're not, you're not in front of us, and we want to make sure that we're clear on...
And those, and the scripts they sent, Jean absolutely right, was detailed responses.
They were fantastic.
Came directly from them in relation to...
Oh, heartfelt, they were great.
Yeah, I would just say thanks for following up on that, and thanks for, for Will for bringing that up originally, because I think it'll bring life to the school improvement plan, but it's also exciting to get out to the schools and see the pride. And so, I mean, we hear from the high school students here, all the good things, and it'll be good and positive to be out in the schools.
Agreed.
I'm excited. I think it's a great idea.
Good. Crisis averted, we're doing it, so...
And I'll work with the principals to see what we can do to, not in a sense, attract crowds, but to invite individuals, constituents, stakeholders in that school to potentially come out on that night.
It'd be great for Lake Camp to be able to...
Well, they probably won't mind, because most of them aren't, I feel.
Probably don't have to touch base with FBS stuff.
Yeah, I know.
With their...
They'll be fine, they'll be fine. So thank you, and thank you for your follow-up on that. Any other questions or comments? Great. We have donation, high school required.
Yes, I would recommend to accept the donation.
I forget what it is.
Selectment in Lakeville of $600, I'm sorry, to the DECA program?
Oh, DECA, okay, yeah, so I'll understand a motion. Oh, go ahead.
So moved. I'll make a motion to...
Well, wait, you need a second, then, we have to discuss.
Second.
Okay, good, we can discuss.
Is there a donation, 500 or 1,500?
There's two numbers here, and I'm confused.
I like the 1,500.
We like the 15, yeah.
It's a part of the...
Yeah, it's part of the, they donated 500 of the 1,500 to that.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, to send of the donation.
That's all the donation.
My only question is, these groups, very well, they look for volunteers to make a donation back to the schools, and they go through the boosters program. So I'd like for us to do some follow-up, that this is a separate donation than what they do for the volunteers at the booster, the athletic booster program do. So typically, they round up volunteers because it goes back to the athletic boosters piece. I'm hoping this is separate, and there's clarity on that.
Yeah, that's not clear from this.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that this is not conflicting with what the, an original arrangement with the Patriot half, as well as the Cranberry tribe, they do...
We can follow up on that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but your point's well taken. But anyway, there's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries. Okay, so now we have the food service update, and we've all opted to go with our printouts. So it should be fine, and thank you for the thorough printout, too. It was good to read through.
Hi. Hi, how is everyone? Hope everyone had a good New Year, and break, long break. So to go over some of the program highlights for this year so far, breakfast counts at all three schools are up this year. They're about 25 at the intermediate school, and actually, for the month of December, they were 27. 39 at Assawamset and 54 at Free Town Elementary. We're looking at expansion of the breakfast program to the middle school, perhaps in '21, '22, they go by the previous school year's free and reduced percentage. So once the kids that are in the intermediate school move over to the middle school, it's about a year lag time before it's mandated over there. So could be '21, '22, unless something changes in the meantime. We had two breakfasts with the senior centers at each of the elementary schools in mid-October. We had our highest count yet at Assawamset with 45 people signed up, and we had 40 at Free Town as well. Our free and reduced percentage is 22%, which is pretty much where it was last year, around 21 and a half last year, so we're right around the same. 80% of those kids that are free and reduced are directly certified, free and reduced. So that comes from the Department of Health and Human Services for students who have benefits, like Medicare benefits or SNAP benefits or transitional assistance, so students who, or foster students, they automatically qualify for free or reduced meals.
And Andrea, just to stop you, that ended up increasing our numbers in that process, correct?
Yes, yes, it did.
Can you speak to that for the board members, especially new board members, to that direct certification?
Yes.
Is not something a parent, a family opts for?
Nope. So students who, whose families are getting some sort of assistance, whether it's unemployment or whatever the case may be, they'll automatically qualify for free or reduced, and the family does not have to fill out a free and reduced application. We just get the information directly from the Department of Health and Human Services. And about two years ago, the Department of Health and Human Services starting, started including Medicare information in there, so students who were on mass health, what, if their income met the correct threshold, we got notified that they would qualify for reduced meals automatically. So when that happened, we picked up about 25 reduced kids right away. So there were kids that hadn't filled out an application, and they should have been getting benefits all along, probably.
Because the application was so cumbersome.
Right.
It's such a much better system.
It is, yeah.
It was horribly cumbersome.
And they're expanding it and refining it all the time, so we're actually, pick up more and more kids almost every year, because there'll be parents who say, you know, my student was free last year, and they're not this year, but we have, nothing's changed, like, we still have, we still receive disability benefits, you know, how come this changed? And it could be that the middle initial was dropped this year, and it wasn't last year, or the hyphen this year and not last year, so they're actually getting really good as far as the matching is concerned, and so we're picking up more kids that way also. With our new online free and reduced applications, we had 60 applications completed through the online portal, so we had way less paper applications than we did last year, which was fantastic. And it's also, they receive an instant notification of their eligibility after they complete that as well. We also received and began utilizing our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Equipment Grant that we were awarded at the end of last year, so we got a total of $33,000, almost $34,000 in equipment awarded. We received all that equipment over the summer and began utilizing it this year. We also received a hot chocolate grant from the Dairy Council at the high school, so we got $1,500 to purchase a, it's called a Choco Lady.
It's called a what, a chocolate what?
It's called a Choco Lady. It's, it's almost like a double boiler machine, that you pour the hot chocolate, and then students can serve themselves. And they can get that, a cup of hot chocolate, instead of their carton of milk at lunchtime, too, so it's been really popular. So then, our next page is going through financials through November. We had one more service day through the end of November this year, as opposed to last year. And if you look at food costs, this year is 34%, last year was 31%. Airmark accounting moved commodity, transportation, and some paper goods back into food costs from direct. So, that's the difference between the food costs this year and last year, and the direct costs this year and last year. So, direct went down, and food costs went up, because they flipped those back into the other category. So, total return this year is $46,316 through the end of November, and that's up 3% from previous school year. We had a couple of pieces of equipment that we had to replace. We had to replace the compressor on the freezer at Assawamset, and the condenser on the freezer at the middle school. So, we had two large equipment expenses that weren't planned when they happened. We knew we had to replace them eventually, but they both died, so we had to replace them. But since we replaced them, they have a 15 to 20-year life, so expenses that we don't have to have for a while. Participation at each school, overall, we're exactly, well, not exactly, we're pretty much where we were last year, although in the month of December, our meal counts were 7% higher than they were last year. We also had our highest count days at the intermediate school and the middle school on December 18th. At the middle school, we serve 50% of the enrollment, and at the intermediate school, 61%. December is usually a very high month as far as counts go, because it's a lot easier to have your kids buy lunch when you have a lot of stuff going on in December. And at the middle school, the daily counts are down a little, but the percentage of enrollment is still the same. We're down approximately 10 students from the previous school year. And then, the next slide was just pictures from our breakfast with the council on aging.
Start coffee.
Mr. Owen serving coffee. Mr. Clark did chat.
Now we have some money to upgrade the picture.
One that's insulated, maybe, so you don't wear your hands on it. And then, the last page also was the pictures of the equipment that we got from our grant, including the middle one is our hot chocolate machine at the high school.
The Choco Lady?
Choco Lady.
I'm not sure about that. Mr. Owen has a question on here.
You're not taking credit for the name of that.
Oh, I know, no, never give it to her.
Staying clear of that.
No. Mr. Owen has a question.
This is great information, and I do have to tip my hat to you, especially when this committee asked each of the departments to come up with a capital plan, a multi-year capital plan, and last year, you presented that, and took that one step further with a grant to pay for that, which is a win-win-win throughout the district. I know most departments can't do that, but I think that was very well served for that aspect. A couple of questions, is before and aft included in your breakfast numbers?
Is not.
They're not, so these are.
No, they have their, they.
They do their own thing.
They do do that to that.
Although we do get some kids that come from before and aft and eat breakfast, much to their parents' dismay.
Yeah.
They breakfast like three times a day.
My other question is, the repairs that we had to do this year, is that out of your budget or out of the maintenance budget?
Those are mine.
So, okay, that's good, okay. I guess with this, there's always opportunities for doing that, the couple of things that the breakfast program, is there an opportunity to try and expand the timing of it? Right now, it's a.
Oh, you mean the 10 minutes?
The drive-by approach thing, and, you know, there may be an opportunity for some morning program where they can have more time to do the breakfast, and I think that would add more numbers to that, not we're trying to inflate the numbers to it, but just, is that that program there? Great about the online registration, does this mean we get to remove six pages from each student that goes home the first day of the year?
Well, we didn't, but this year, we just handed out the instructions, so they didn't actually get the paper application home with them, just the instructions of, that, you know, you're going to need to fill out a paper, you're going to need to fill out an application, here's how to obtain a paper one if you'd like it, otherwise, here's the website, go. And a lot of, so it's the same website that we use for our online prepayments for the lunch program, so if you already had a password, if you already had a username, it's the same thing. You just logged in there and filled out the application on there, and it prompted, the first time parents logged in for the school year, it prompted them like, hey, why don't you, why don't you fill this out, in case you didn't know you had to, or didn't know you could.
A great segue, I think the biggest angst is the online payment component. I don't know, and you and I have talked about this, are there ever avenues where the fees aren't so high, or is there an easier approach to do that? And I know there's a lot of tie-ins to our current software type thing, so when we reevaluate those, there's maybe other questions that we can look into for that, but done.
Yeah, they all, all the systems that, all the online prepayment systems, each POS company pretty much has their own, they all have some sort of fee, whether it's a user fee or a maintenance fee, they all have some sort of percentage that they apply to your purchase, and just those fees vary, so you have to look at that and what works with our student information system and all that kind of good stuff.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, piggybacking on Steve's, bringing the rush of breakfast, this day is starting a Be Haden, the Bell Breakfast Program.
Yes.
Will we have to be involved in that?
60%, you have to be a free and reduced percentage of 60% or more, and in order to be mandated breakfast, it's 40%. So, we're, at Free Town Elementary, we're just over 40%, so we're not that close to the 60% mandated after the bell yet. They do offer grants to expand your breakfast program using those strategies, either having it in the classroom, having a kiosk in the hallway, that they just grab it and go into the classroom, or second chance breakfast, where they go to the classroom first and take attendance and then come down, but we aren't close to, that close to being mandated for that yet.
Thank you.
Well, we've come a long way from, you know, three and five students, and have, you know, shuffling them off the bus, so kudos to you, and thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Great job, Andrea.
Anything else, folks? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to report, so I took a minute to catch up.
The one director who doesn't get a night off.
Ashley.
Another director, they'll be up the next.
Yeah, they'll be up the next, yeah.
I just have a short update, over the winter break, for the two weeks, we were able to get a lot of maintenance and cleaning done in the buildings, it was great, it was almost a second to a summer for us. With that, we did a lot of work around air quality over at the middle school, so we took the report, we've been going through the list, checking some items off, we've been reaching out to vendors to see who could come in, and with that, we are also going to be doing the RFQ for the performance contracting, so we can see what will be rolled in during the energy audit. That rolls into my next point, performance contracting, we got approved by the Massachusetts Department of Energy and Resources to put out our RFQ. That will be going out next week on January 15th. If you would like the breakdown of the dates, I can send that to you outside of this meeting. All of the requests will be back in at the end of the month, and you'll select a vendor at the beginning of February.
Beautiful.
Just for reference, the MSBA accelerated program opened today, and it will be closing on February 14th, 2020. So, if we would like to do something in the accelerated program, that's something we could start thinking about, it's a quick turnaround opposed to, yes, the other programs, so in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be working with facilities, and I'll be working with Rick to determine if we're going to go forward.
To just identify something that would fit within this purview, okay.
What we're wrestling, the struggle is the timeframe in relation to the audit coming to, and making sure, it may, as much as we've talked about this for some time, it may be more advantageous to actually wait one more year on that accelerated program piece. Keep in mind, when you do the accelerated program, you accept it, half of the, so if we do Assawamset, which is where we'd probably be focusing that, Lakeville would have to still meet, because you're not going to receive, you know, 50%, 60% reimbursement at max, so we will, we are looking at that, we're just trying to balance that with, with everything else we have looking, that we're looking at for.
So, is there a match with that, is what you're saying?
Well, when you're receiving it, the town, yeah, the town contribution has to be there, too.
Do a contribution, yep. So, yeah, timing is tough.
Does it make sense to add that to the agenda for next Thursday, since we have other ideas in there?
It probably does.
Yeah, both these topics will be for next Thursday.
Okay.
Just for the committee to know, we've completed the Safer Schools Grant, which is the security cameras and the Bob access over at AES, I've completed the paperwork, and we're closing out that grant. Also, just an update on FY '21 budget, we're waiting to hear what the governor is going to be proposing at the end of the month. After that's released, I'll be able to update the information we have, and also have a better understanding of what the new ed reform changes are going to be, they haven't rolled those out yet. Currently, in our budget, we've rolled in the technology plan that we've been working on, and also the capital plan that we've been working on, so those are both included in there that you'll see in February.
Beautiful. Question?
So, Assawamset was the last school that really needed that upgrade in relation to security, and the keys, and the doors, and things like that, so.
Now we're done.
Very good place in relation to all of our schools.
Until the technology changes all over again, but.
The other piece is, you will be seeing an updated technology document at your place, reflective of finances and things, and I know that's been an ongoing topic.
Yep.
Ashley specifically referenced it there, to be sure, because, and we've shared that with both the director of facilities and technology, that in order to, you know, gain support in the budget process, we need to have a document that we can present and carry out to the towns. So, that is the expectation moving forward, at least by the meeting that you would bless, you'd have that document as well.
So, now we're, I can't believe it, subcommittee updates, there's no update on that.
Well, I do, I do, so at your place, so for the four, four committee, subcommittee members, which are Mr. Sylvia, Mr. Clark, Mr. Senkowitz, and the chair, Mrs. Fox, what I did is provide you with kind of a template based on the new model that they're now suggesting for superintendents in the district, and actually, the model's included it there. It's a two-year model, I've included the last evaluation this committee completed, which is in 2018, so the next one, we come up with a goal and kind of do that. The last survey is now two years old, so I'm kind of sharing with the subcommittee, it's probably time, I would say.
To survey.
To survey again the community, it's the oldest.
And that's the survey that I created.
Correct, correct, so that's, that's in place there, and you'll see in 2017, you'll see a draft of some goals, you'll see district data reports, and then the DES piece. My, my suggestion, not that we're looking for additional meetings, is probably to piggyback around a school committee meeting in the near future in relation to this document. Any of the four members, just so for the other members who are here or not part of that group, they haven't had an opportunity to see the document. I just put it at their place, so we could either set up a subsequent meeting, whether it be before or after, and make a determination if we want to meet for a few minutes. We've also, on occasion, met through the chair, right? The chair has put your questions and information together, and sends one of those emails like I was referencing to the principals.
And creates havoc.
And I'm ready for it, though, so I can kind of do that, so, but I, I wanted to kickstart this piece now that we have all the data points in place, you'll see the strategic plans on that, in that one section, you'll see the recently updated district accommodation plan, in addition to all the school improvement plan, so.
No, this is, this is great, thank you.
It's a good start, it's really.
It really is a good start, now, I was thinking February, but you were on top of it, so that's actually really good for our timing overall.
So, I would just recommend any of the members that have any suggestions or thoughts, please.
So, let's digest this, but I would like to suggest that we try to meet in the next two to four weeks.
Sure.
Right? Because we want to keep it rolling. Are you, good with you?
And you have, and we have a couple of meetings within that timeframe.
That's what I'm saying, so, while I hate trying to drive back here earlier from Boston, I think it's, we need to do it, so, so let's, after, if anybody on this committee could just shoot me an email after they've had a chance to digest this, then I'll circle back with you, and we'll figure out which of the next couple of meetings we want to do, because I also, you know, we're here at the next meeting, but then after that, we're at the middle school, and we're going to be all over the place.
And the committee members, if you didn't notice, the entire documents draft, right?
Yes.
Not specifically draft, stamped draft on the goal, because you haven't even had an opportunity to have input into that, and I recognize that, and I wanted people to understand, I wasn't making an assumption that this is easily accepted, but it was a starting point.
No, and that's appreciated, we frequently have gone back and forth on the actual goals.
Yep.
So, that's, this is great. Thank you. Regional FinCon?
Next meeting is next Thursday, the 16th. Just a couple of highlights, the selectmen and the board of Lakeville have asked to attend as the full board, so we extended that invite out, actually, to the Free Town Board of Selectmen, but right now, we have confirmation that the Lakeville Board of Selectmen will be attending, along with the town administrator, as well as a town administrator from Free Town. There's, one of the things we talk about is the whole budget process, it's been brought up in Lakeville, the bylaws that the actual town meeting should be the second week in May, not in June, so they're trying to push things up, so which will have an impact on our budget process as far as timing. The other big thing is, warrant articles are due in March, so we'll have to push that forward as far as what we want to go through that, so.
6:30 next Thursday, right here, same night as our, as our winter concert now, that I found out from the board.
Oh, brother.
Scheduled, so we can finish up with the flurry next, and.
Well, we just put them in the same room, we'd be able to.
Oh, that would be productive.
We'd drawn out one of the.
I heard that, thank you for the update. Policy manual, subcommittee.
So, the policy committee has really been working hard tonight.
Yeah.
And we just about finished Section J, we are working with the nurses, or the nurses are working on some of the sections for us, giving us their expertise in those sections. Once we finish that, we have a couple more to do, and then we'll be bringing it to the committee.
It'll be time to start all over again.
We have been, we have discussed the fact that we are doing this for at least 10 years, so this has all been done for 10 years, we may have to, we may have to meet here. Well, you'll have to, yes. Periodically, but, not for a complete review.
Well, no, and it's definitely a labor-intensive effort, so, good, this is great.
Yes, it was good for all of us, right, Renee? Even Renee will be happy to see.
Even Renee will be happy to say goodbye to this, yes, I know. Then you also have a wellness subcommittee update, huh?
Yes, so the wellness committee met on December 11th. I'm always impressed with meeting with the nurses, and hearing them, and hearing about the things that they do. They covered the breakfast program that they heard about tonight, they also covered the dental program, so those two areas right there. We had a discussion about whooping cough epidemic, or whatever, that's the wrong word.
Outbreak.
Outbreak, thank you. And some members of this committee wanted to know how many of our students had not been immunized, and throughout the district, 35 out of 2,800 students, so a very small percentage. We welcomed a new member, Lori Damaris.
Damaris?
Oh, yeah, from Free Town.
She's an excellent nurse, she's done some international stuff, yes.
Well, we just found out that she is the director of public health.
Yes, she is.
Nurse for Lakeville and Free Town.
And Free Town, that's correct.
That's right, so it was nice to have her, we're looking for a community member, so she certainly is the ideal.
Yeah, she's going to be an active member now, moving forward.
Thank you.
Or double.
Yeah, it did.
Other than that, it was a long meeting, but it really produced a lot of good conversation.
My next meeting is scheduled February 26th.
February 26th, right.
Excellent, well, that's, I'm glad, I'm really glad this wellness committee's coming together, I'm sure everybody feels the same way. Any other business that may properly come before the meeting? I see a hand already, I didn't get it out of my mouth.
As we're coming off of a winter break, as a parent, and we're talking about school calendar coming up.
Oh, yeah.
This two-week break.
Yeah, he had a problem with that.
I don't know if problem was the right word, but.
You were ready for them to go back.
Yeah.
So, that two-week break, just, and Laura asked me a question when she came in to sign warrants, so that was our no homework vacation break at all levels, which we have done. I didn't publicize as much, it's become so common that I didn't feel the need to put it in the superintendent's corner, Laura asked the question, and so, which was inclusive of the high school, which the high school principal made sure she pointed out to me, because she said, don't tell me I have to have another high school vacation break type of thing, with AP classes and things a lot happening, so. I do have a couple of quicks, so I do have a calendar reference, if I may.
Yes, please.
I'm the last person I know to get in front of a motion to adjourn, so I'll be quicky, I promise. Next meeting, high school program studies, Dr. Starkey will be here, Mr. Cabusio will also be here with an athletic program update, annual update. To Mr. Owen's point, I already have a couple of drafts of, you've got some tough decisions to make, school committee members, when you consider the community, which has looked for, starting later, also longer break during the wintertime, if you look at next year, and using this in reference, Christmas falls on Friday.
Friday.
So, in all likelihood, we won't have the two-week break, you'd probably project Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
But you can do a week and a half.
Week and a half, still carry that through. Labor Day is late later this year, it's one of the latest dates it could possibly be. It is now tentatively, is set for September 7th. So if we stay with our current practice of starting after Labor Day, the students, the first day of school would be September 8th. Our last day would be Monday, June 21st.
With no snow days.
With no snow days, meaning that Friday would be June 25th. That is very late.
That's almost the 4th of July.
In my six years here, I have not had that experience. I think we need to, and we're not making that decision now, we'll make it in the next four to six weeks, but as I present the calendar, bring it forward, I've already asked Renee to put together what an option would look like of starting prior to Labor Day for the students. Keep in mind that the Wednesday before Labor Day this coming year is still September, it's actually September 1st. So if you went to school, if students went to school starting on Wednesday, September 2nd, for example, I'm sorry, yeah, September 1st is on the Tuesday, second, Wednesday, and they went to school for three days and then had the break, that then moves up the last day of school significantly to the 17th, so.
So we.
We need to have that kind of conversation.
Well, we need to look at it from a policy standpoint. We could look at if Labor Day falls after a date certain, then we need to begin prior to. We also need to remind people that most districts now, nationwide, in fact, nationwide, in the South, they start well early August, but nationwide, they're starting for the very reasons you cite, that that 180 days with snow puts you close to the 4th of July when you're ending the year, not productive learning time.
The commissioner, who is a big-time advocate, and I think has been very a breath of fresh air in the Commonwealth, but has been very upfront and clear at telling schools they need to really examine their school calendar, look to start before Labor Day, but also consider what has been traditional vacations of February and April and collapsing them.
Yeah.
We have some uniqueness here, we have that added Friday, as you know, we contractually agreed to, so it's, I believe it's worth a look-through in relation, I think as long as we give advance notice to people.
Well, and you're not going to make an instant change.
We've got a presidential election.
Correct.
So I had to take that into account. And our PD committee was looking to move the professional day to a different timeframe and typically, we have attempted to have our PD day and no school on, especially with the presidential election, which would be November 3rd this year. So that's, consider that first. So those are the types of things we're considering. I just wanted, in light of the two weeks, I've, I've heard, I don't know if any folks have any comments, I know, keep you here, but I've heard both ends of it, right? I've heard people indicate that it was a great opportunity and, and break for, for everybody involved. I can tell you, I went to a couple of schools today to do my, you know, visits and walkthroughs and kids are back on task. I was a little concerned about the break because it's almost, I didn't want it to be a whole restart year, right, like summer vacation where you have some regression. I didn't get that sense, I will say that, from administrators and, and teachers, quite frankly, in the classrooms, who said, "Kids came back ready to roll." But I just want you to be aware, we're working on it now so we can start bringing the calendar in first draft. I have done both and I'll, I'll wait to hear from the chair and vice chair how you want me to proceed. I have, on occasion, just brought forward one calendar. I'm recommending that you kind of have a couple to look at.
My feeling is we should have a couple, that's just me, I'm speaking for me on that, thank you. I am concerned that, you know, that we're starting this conversation a little bit later than probably would have been, because I think there is potential for hue and cry out there.
Renee can speak to it more than anyone, people are already, have been calling.
A lot of companies.
Right, got a vacation.
They need a year in advance to put their vacation.
Exactly.
So you do have that dynamic of that. So that's why if we set up to a policy, but if you sit there and say, hey, Labor Day starts after.
The 5th, then we're going to start.